Yeah.
Sunshine, we're all ready to go?
We are.
Okay. Just checking. Okay, at five thirty, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'd like to excuse Councilwoman Goodrich and Councilman Baird. And Mayor Bird is on his way. He may make it in time, he may not, we'll see how it goes. Councilman Allen?
I move, we make Councilman Boozenbar the mayor pro temp, seeing as how Mayor Bird's not here.
Second.
We have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? You didn't see me, so. Okay, we'll go ahead and start with our opening ceremony. It asks Councilman White to give us an opening prayer, and afterwards, ask Lieutenant Tucker to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful we gathered tonight, grateful for this wonderful city that we live in for the freedoms and liberties that we enjoy as part of this great country. We pray that thou will bless much over those who served to keep us safe and tirelessly work to help us maintain those freedoms. We pray that thy Spirit will be here as we discuss the events and items on our agenda, grateful for the great citizens of Roosevelt and their interest and input in decisions that need to be made. We pray that we may be guided and make the decisions that are in best interest for all those involved. This we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Okay, thank you very much. If anyone get a chance to look at the minutes from last time, any corrections? There was one already brought up with sunshine.
I looked through them, moved to approve, if there's nothing else, need a second?
Okay, motion by Councilman White to approve, second by Councilman Allen, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we're now at our public comment period. We allow three minutes per person. If you'd like to make a comment, but are unable to, please consider emailing to the city council as well. So, if anyone would like to make comment, we'd like to have you do that this time. Please step up to the microphone, state your name, where you live, and again, we'll try to keep it to three minutes.
Mr. Maybourn? First of all, I'd like to thank you for the prayer and for the training we appreciate. I think most everybody knows why we're here. So, I would like to address the golf course and the walking park or path that's been proposed. I think it is important that we're inclusive in all of those facilities that the county, that the city has, that they pay. I want to start out by giving an experience that I had in Las Vegas. I was playing golf in Las Vegas, and I witnessed a woman getting killed with a golf ball. She was off to the side of the fairway, the golfer hooked the golf ball and hit her in the temple and killed her. That was a traumatic experience for me. Also, we all know that anything that our golf ball destroys on a golf course or outside the golf course, like windows and things like that, if it can be proved it was our ball or their ball, they're wrong. There are signs that say you are responsible for any damage to your golf ball. That puts a liability on the golfer. I know that you guys are concerned about the liability for the city, but you need to be concerned about the liability to individuals. If I were to happen to do that, and critically injured a young person or a adult, that would not only devastate me physically, mentally, but probably financially. And I don't think it's worth it. I've studied the city, the state. I've been told there are two golf courses in Utah that allow that. One was Lobe River and one was in St. George. I did not get a hold of the one in St. George, but I did the one in Provo. They don't, do not allow walking on the golf. There is a golf, a walking park along the outer perimeters, which is on the other side of the river of the golf course. And there is a bridge that you can walk across over onto the golf course. But the pro there, Jeff, assured me that when they see that happen, they remove those people from the golf because of the liability. He also told me that the insurance required it to be engineered walking with the diligence done for the same people. I don't know what that means. If somebody gets hurt or killed, does that mean they should have put a roof over the top of it to keep that happening? Speaking of there is a signature that says that they would not hold you responsible, in today's world, the deep pocket gives broad answer. I really am against this, not only because of the liabilities, the city's already spent money for two walking parks. And I think there's money in that.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Anyone else would like to approach in open time and talk to the council?
Thank you for having me, and I'm also here for the golf course meeting.
Thank you.
I also think this is a terrible idea to allow this to happen to the golf course. My wife and I live on the golf course, we see walkers, we see near misses here every day. In fact, I was up there Sunday golfing, early morning, Roger was there. I intentionally shot, rolled up right next to Roger.
I think it's on purpose.
I am also concerned about that. I have seen people get hit, unfortunately, not like golfers. But I have seen, they are injured, and it's a terrible deal. Also, people that walk the golf course, are they entitled to pay dues like the golfers are to use the golf course? Will they be trucked, how will they be monitored if they're entering and exiting the golf course? Everybody that gals there, pays their fees, season pass holders pay their fees, park people, everything else. If it's a convenience to walk out and walk the golf course, sorry, you should pay as well. You know, we cannot go to ball fields, stakes and snakes in the ground, and play horseshoes. Those are designated ball fields, it's just a golf course. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Allen Smith. I looked up on my computer this evening before coming down here, and the word physics definition of a golf course is a parcel of land designed to play golf. Occasionally, most likely nine and eighteen hole golf course, nine and eighteen holes. It doesn't say it's designed for walking and other items of recreation. The city has multiple parks down here, the new park, a new golf park, a walking course. I see there is a frisbee course here on this, on the west side of Constitution Park, we have the central city park. A lot of parks in that, I agree that trying to encourage frisbee and walking on the golf course would be a bad idea. I moved out here when I retired from a ranching business twenty-five years ago, mainly because of the golf course. I didn't move here to be involved in a very dangerous situation. I'm highly opposed to this proposal, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for moving out here.
I appreciate this opportunity, and I'd like to commend the city on many good things you do. I'd like to throw something out just for your consideration and maybe to ponder on a little bit. A few years ago in the city, we had a person that was being detained, and he was restrained, and he was down near the police department. One of our good officers happened to take him down by the neck, and it broke his neck, and he became quadriplegic, and was wolf. Anybody related to him, I'm not saying anything bad about anybody. Consequently, he was a quadriplegic following that incident. I was on this Utah Local Government Insurance Trust Board of Directors at the time. In fact, I chaired that board for eight years. And that case came up, and I want you to consider something like this. To really, no quality officer, he thought he was doing the right thing, or the other person was in restraints. And when he took him down, he didn't intend to hurt him like he did, but it happened, unfortunately. Like, you might have known the family. And when that, that claim came to the trust, the insurance trust, people were kind of scratching their heads. He was restrained, and why did you take him down like that with such force? They ask these kinds of questions when they're reviewing these. You need to know the insurance trust that ensures two hundred and twenty-eight cities in this state, and most of the counties and all the special service districts. They don't have to indemnify you. If you read your policy, they can step away from any incident if they want to. So be aware of that. And then, to make the long story short, and I'll do it. We elected to indemnify the city over this incident, and when the case came up, rather than go to court and have the gentleman wielding in a wheelchair and a jury watching this, we chose to pay over a million dollars in the claim. And it happened because, I think I had the influence to make that happen while I was there. And it's nothing to do with me, it's just the position I held at the time. Otherwise, it would have been considered probably something they wouldn't want to touch. And other cities have done things like, some of the cities that we used to insure, this is a long time ago, they've actually quit insuring them because some of the things that they were proposing, things are being built. With that, I'd like to kind of know what's been proposed tonight too, you know? I mean, a golf course does present some liability, and you've got people up there, you've got balls going, you know, over a hundred miles an hour. If they hit somebody, it's going to do some damage. And our old green superintendent, Brent Benk, could attest to that. He got hit in the head one time, and the one who woke up was stacy mutton. But you just got to be aware of those kind of things when you make these kind of decisions. And I think the walking paths are great, I have nothing against them, but just be aware of the situation. You could be putting your citizens and the golfers in, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Benkarten. And I think this came about because we've been trying to update our policy for the city. We've got some code that was outdated, we're trying to update it. And this, this came about because this was part of the code that was recommended by the group that we had hired to help us get our code. And that's how this kind of came about. Tonight, we're just planning another discussion, if we don't have it to vote, especially not having all the council here. We're not planning to necessarily vote, but we did want to have discussion, and we'll have some of that. It's later in the docket, but I do appreciate your comments, so thank you. Anyone else?
Go ahead.
I'm going to talk something totally different on this. No, I started out as a quadriplegic.
Bishop, what's your name?
Bishop Blacker. I live at the villa. And through work, I've come down to where I have asked, using my leg, excuse me. But if it's going through here, going to live in the Hoover City and living in here for the past two years, I've noticed your handicap accessible is very bad here. A lot of the stores you can't get into, a lot of the restaurants I can barely fit in. I tried to get into the French Air Grill, and they said, well, we can get you out and then move your chair in, and they'll put you back in again. I said, no, you can't, because if I can't fit in, if I can't fit in with my chair, what makes you think the chair can fit in by itself? Then they said, well, we got a ramp out back that they use for loading dock to get me in. And then you get in there, but you don't have, the restrooms are downstairs. So, again, there's a lot of older buildings that are non-handicap accessible. And that's against the, what is it, the?
ADA.
ADA. And coming down here is, it's like riding on the back roads because of the sidewalks and how crumbly they are. Some places are good, some places are not. You spend all that money on the, what is it, the park? But there's places where there is no ramp, no sliding for you to get off in there. And if you do, you're coming down at an angle to where you, too much unwanted forward, you're going to fall over. This chair weighs four hundred and thirty pounds. Now, you fall over, and then that's going to hit you. And I'm not the only one that is on a handicap, I found that wheelchair. And from the sounds of it, if you put that walk around with the golf cart, you'd have a lot more people walking around here in wheelchairs. And people are moving in that have family members that are in wheelchairs. Now, I don't know if you guys have done anything to sit a little more going down, because like over by where, what's his name's? Tire shop used to be right on the corner. Now, that's still not filled yet, and that was two years ago. And you've got planets that I've almost fell over on because of the ground by control. And I guess I have a little better handle on control, because if not, I would have went over not just the sidewalk, but also two feet down off that hill.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, and definitely something I know Kirby's here, and we do have a plan in the city, and we're working on things. It's, I'm sure there's, we can do more though, so I appreciate you.
Can I say something about your golf course?
Really quick, I have some other people.
It was during the Masters, one of the guys that were playing killed a person by hitting him in the head with the ball. These are professionals. So there's no, oh, it's just, they're amateurs, no, it's professional dudes, same thing. Nobody can guarantee where that ball is going to go.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, I'm saying the.
Could you also state your name for the record?
Oh, pleasure. I'm opposed to walking, because I'm a terrible golfer.
You and me both.
It's not that I'm aiming at someone, it's really dangerous for someone to be walking around where I am, because I'm terrible, you know? And so that ball goes anywhere, and I, you know, and I don't go up to the walking park to hit my driving range, you know? If I got that, it'd be a bucket. So, I don't know, it just doesn't make law sense. Thanks.
Thank you, appreciate it. We do need to move on, if there's anyone that just really needs speak, we are going to address this issue here in a little bit, and probably have a little more discussion.
My name is Hilio Barana, and I'm living in Five Hundred One South, British East. And I buy a property over here in North Crescent Row with water. Now he said he can put a meter, he don't sell water. And I buy the property with water, you know? And before I buy the property, Senator Tony Juan, he checked it out over here in the city. And he said, yeah, he can buy the property, but the property has water. And now he's saying not.
And have you worked with, who have you been working with on that?
This is part of the discussion we're having.
Later? Okay. We are actually working on it, I apologize for the issue you're having. We're trying to work on some of that with Cedarview Motwell, and we've been having discussions with them. We're hoping to have that resolved here as soon as we can, so I apologize, but we are working on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and move on. I don't have any council appointments, I don't think we have any, or committee appointments, so. Our first item is a public hearing on the final fiscal year twenty-five budget. Mr. Baig?
Thank you, Mr. Baig, or council. So it's not I have presenting the final budget, council, I've seen the tentative budget that was approved a couple of weeks ago. One thing a little bit about the history of the budget, one thing I spoke with department heads is, you know, the past couple of years, things have been good. The economy's getting better, relatively speaking. Inflation's not great, but revenues have been going up. But however, it's very important that we stay fiscally conservative, and we need to understand that as revenues continue to go up, it's not always going to be that way. So I gave a great challenge to our department heads, and I asked them to make a flat budget. A flat budget working into the necessary improvements that we need to have happening. We have a lot of great projects that are going on in the city, and the past couple of years, we've been building, building, building. I kind of term this year as the year of completion, let's finish some things. So as we look at what the department heads have come back with, they've done a phenomenal job. And just some of the high level numbers for you to consider is, in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, we had a nine million dollar budget approved. Revenue wise, we brought in nine point seven million. So we ended up with seven hundred million dollars, or seven hundred thousand dollars surplus. Last year, we approved a budget of ten point nine million dollars. About five years ago, we were getting up to the ten million dollar mark, and COVID hit, we went down a couple of years, and we were slightly going back up. So last year, we approved ten point nine million, and we're on pace to bring in approximately that same amount, for about five hundred thousand dollars surplus right now. This year, we're proposing a ten point three million dollar budget. So about seven million, or seven, let me do it again, seven hundred thousand dollars less than our previous year, which I think is phenomenal, considering we've been able to put in the necessary improvements and expenditures to make this budget a prosperous one for the community as well. So when you look at some of the different changes that are on there, you have the budgets before you, and we've broken things down in the name of transparency to try to make things much more readable, rather than one big fund that has all, everything in it. We've tried to break things down more by departments, subdepartments, divisions, so we can see exactly, actually, what it costs to have a human resources or a building department, or what it costs for our custodial services. We want to make sure everything is broken down as much as we can. So Ms. Goodrich has done a wonderful job with that, our department heads have been phenomenal in getting those numbers back to us. So we are presenting that ten point three million dollar budget for our general fund. For our capital projects, last year, we proposed twelve million dollars in capital projects. These are our larger projects, such as the sports complex, the nature park, road reconstructions on there. These are our, our larger projects such as the sports complex, the nature park, uh, road reconstructions on there as well. We were able to complete about six million dollars of those projects. So about half of them got completed. So this year we are proposing that we continue on with four point eight million of those projects. So that will carry over and an additional only five million dollars worth of projects. So approximately ten million dollars in capital projects. Again, with the carryover, we're, we're proposing to reduce our capital projects by two million dollars. Again, we want to complete things and we want to be very fiscally conservative and not spend more money than we're bringing in. This does allow us to keep our reserves at a very healthy level. In fact, healthier than they've been the past many years. Um, so we're doing a great job of keeping those reserves in check for any other situations that might arise. So we are proposing a ten million, ten million, ten thousand sixty-four dollar, um, capital projects for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And approximately a ten point three million dollar general fund budget. Are there any specific questions that you would like me to address by department or by capital projects? You have the list in front of you. And I know this in the public hearing, so I will be here if, why would councilmen like to address stuff?
We haven't actually entered a public hearing and I'm gonna turn the, over to the mayor of his responsibility. So I'll just be a councilman now, which is fine.
I appreciate Councilman Bozenberg taking, taking charge. So apologize for being late. It's been crazy on the trail. So it's good to be with you tonight though. I did listen in. By the way, I was listening in to all the comments that were, um, made earlier about the golf course. So have taken notes of those and appreciate all those that participated and shared their thoughts and feelings. With the budget, counsel, do you have any, any questions on any of the budgets? Um, I talked to Joseph a little earlier today about this. Was glad to see that we are making some reductions in our budget and we're, we have some foresight and some planning. Um, we have a presidential election this year. They can change things significantly. And so appreciate the, the staff and working uh, on that and having that foresight. So. Any thoughts?
I, I don't have any questions. We go to public hearing to, uh, discuss and, and hopefully approve the, the budget.
Okay. We have a motion to enter the public hearing, uh, for discussion of the, is now we're not finalizing the budget tonight. This is just the final budget that we're looking at, public hearing in the next meeting.
If it's up to you with public hearing, you can finalize it tonight if you so choose. You just have to do it by the end of the month.
Exactly.
Yes.
So I'm just, and I just want to throw that out there. So if there's any questions, thoughts, concerns, we do have a little bit of time. So we have a motion to enter, uh, into a public hearing. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Allen. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll consider ourselves in a public hearing. Are there any here tonight that would like to comment on the budget? And do we have that document up? Okay.
Rhonda emailed it to me. So that's where I got it.
Yeah. Let's send it to her so that we can at least put it up and display it.
Um, Katie Duncan, I just would like to ask a couple of questions and put them on the public record. As to the, uh, proposed budget for the golf course and the expenses.
Yeah, please.
Okay. So right now the golf course is projected to bring revenues of just over one million dollars, one million thirty-four thousand two hundred. With expenses of one million four hundred ten thousand fifty-three dollars. So fourteen percent of the total budget and seventy-three percent self, self-funded.
What's the, let's do a quick math. What's the deficit there?
Two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Okay.
That's the one right there. So this will be the quick breakdown of what the revenue is, the expenditures, whether there's a surplus deficit, the percent of the total budget and whether or not it's self-funded. As some departments are self-funded, some are not. And so, yeah, golf courses are eighteen. And that is one we have been improving and that deficit has been going down and down. Our golf course, they've been phenomenal, doing a great job of getting that. Subsidy smaller and smaller every year. So great job, our golf course. And our golfers.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is that the question you got?
Yes, thank you.
I'd just like to know the expenses on the, uh, the rest of the recreational facilities, the ball dines, the parks, the swimming pool. All of the other recreational facilities that are furnished by the city. What is the subsidy for all of those?
A lot of those are up there. You can see Val seventeen through twenty.
They're all good.
It's, that's why you can still raise taxes. That's why you have that, the furnished facilities. And I think we have a very good community with a lot of good facilities. We don't want to raise taxes.
Yeah, we don't want to raise taxes. We, we, uh.
Okay. Not raise taxes, but charge that.
Yeah.
Back the revenue. I'm not for raising taxes.
Any other comments?
Well, just one question. Are the, is the parks included in recreation or where's just under, you know, like Constitution Park?
Uh, number sixteen there.
Oh, okay. That's, that's total parks, everything. Okay.
That's where the revenue, they're extremely small because.
Yeah. Cause there's, there's no user fees.
For the parks, maybe it is.
Yeah. And some of the baseball fields and all of that.
Yeah, we made it for recreation. So in our budget, we separated recreation and parks separate. Historically, they were parks and recreation in one. Here we've broken them out into two separate categories. So there is some revenue that comes in for baseball and soccer, football. But again, that's, that's manageable in the grand scheme of things as well.
Yeah. Of, of the, of the charge for the billions. So, so actually the golf course is the only one that really almost pays for itself.
The golf course in the past couple of years is getting better. Every single year.
Yeah.
Is there any creative accounting on the charging of water to the golf course, considering a take or pay contract for the water that we have, that it really doesn't cost that much if we don't use all the water that we have a take or pay contract?
Right now, we actually charge, even though it's the city water, we charge ourselves water for the golf course. So we know what the true actual amount is that it costs to run a golf course. Because it, say you wanted to buy the golf course tomorrow, we would want to know what the actual amount is. So we do charge ourselves water, even though the water's coming from us.
Okay, I can understand that.
But do you leave any water that we pay for that we don't use in a take or pay contract?
Now, what happened?
We used to. I don't know what do we do now or not?
Well, I think we, what we do is calculate the end, the water usage every year and then we apply that. So if you, a lot of the water that we, uh, get on the golf course, um, and Mr. Hancock will, will, will know this, comes from sand wash reservoir. And so we have a contract that we have to pay every year. It's almost, what is it? Four hundred thousand dollars that we pay for three thousand acre feet. And it looks as though we use approximately five hundred acre feet of water, uh, at the golf course every year. And so, and those are approximate numbers. And so we apply that cost to the golf course and, and things like that. When we use culinary water or we're filling ponds and things with culinary water, then we apply that as well.
But do we credit back anybody for the water that we don't use, that we pay for?
Well, that's, that's a, that's kind of a tough question because we do have three thousand acre feet of water in sand wash, but we only use about fifteen hundred of it.
Yeah, what I'm saying.
So what we've done is we've negotiated with other entities to sell that water and make sure that we're made whole. So we are actually making money on our water, uh, the additional water, uh, aside from what's being used from the golf course. So it's not a burden to the city. And we negotiated those things.
And, and I think that's good, that's a good policy.
Yeah.
But I don't see anywhere where these entities are credited back for that money you're making on water you didn't use.
I get what, well, okay. Maybe I, I almost thought I, I knew what you were saying, but then I got lost right there at the end. But um, ultimately we're fairly applying the amount of water that's used by the golf course to the bottom line to make sure that it shows accurately.
So is each one of, everything under parks, do they pay their own separate water bill?
And that's a good question. Do we, do we figure that in, into each one, Dustin?
We pay the parks for that water use as well.
Okay.
Yep.
So the golf course pays for that?
No, golf course does not pay for that. Parks, parks pays for.
Correct.
So our recreational facilities create.
Can we, just one second. Sorry, cause Sunshine is probably going crazy over here. We're trying to keep back of comments and who's making comments. So we need to, we need to have a little bit of order to the meeting. So if you do ask a question or make a comment, state your name for the record so that she knows who's asking the question, making the comment, right? Sunshine?
Yeah.
Okay.
So actually our recreational departments are making money through the water they don't use that the city sells. And they're not getting credits for it because you pay for it. And then you, what you don't use, you turn around and sell. Is that revenue accredited to those facilities that use the water that you've paid for? They pay you for it, the whole amount. So you have an extra fifteen hundred acre feet that you sell and get revenue for, but nobody gets credit.
So the water's not owned, now if the water was owned by the golf course, then we could do something like that. The water's not owned by the golf.
I think it'll be equally accredited to all of the.
The, the water is owned by Roosevelt City. It's a block of water. And then it's allocated to each, uh, you know, the golf course or the parks or whatever. And as it's allocated to those parks, then whatever the cost is, is applied to that. Now, if we were charging, and I don't know that we are, there was, we did have an administrator who was charging retail costs for water to those. And so in your, in, in your thinking, and this is where I was going earlier. If we're showing a retail fee to the golf course, then there's also gotta be, you know, you have that expense to the golf course, but that would show up as income in the general fund or in another fund, right? So I don't know if we're charging retail costs or if we're charging actual costs. Does that make sense?
What Val's asking for, we got three hundred thousand acre feet and we're only using half of that. Do we only pay for what we use or?
No, we pay for everything, no matter if we use.
Then what happens to the money that you get for the water we don't use out of sand wash?
Goes to the general budget. But the thing is, is the, that's because the water that's in sand wash is not dedicated necessarily to just the golf course or these other things. It's dedicated to secondary water throughout the whole city.
Right. And that's what he was asking though. Where does that money go that, from the water we don't use?
Yeah. And that was a good, um, honestly, we did have some good administrators uh, beforehand that had some foresight to, to purchase that water. And that's why we have it available. Half of it was going to Fish Flow. And so there was a contract that the state was paying for fifteen hundred acre feet of that. And then when that contract, uh, renewed, we had the ability to keep that or let it go. And then we had the, the wisdom, I think wisdom, to keep a hold of that, even though it was a pretty big chunk of money that we were having to pay for where we weren't going to use that. But once we build out our secondary system, we will use all three thousand acre feet. But regardless, I think the question is, are we applying appropriately the cost of the water to each individual, um, line item or recreation? And we are. And so each one of them is getting the, the appropriate, uh, fee or cost applied to it. So it shows accurately on the books.
Mayor, I think, aren't they just paying for what, what, what are they're using? They're not paying like we.
Correct.
They're not paying ahead of time for five hundred and only using four hundred. They're paying as they're using it. And that's what, that's what's applied to theirs is I.
Exactly.
One more statement to me. We are a city, the city as a whole of all of these parks. It's all one unit. We're getting charged for secondary water, right? Okay. We're getting a revenue from that secondary water coming back to the city. Why can't that be distributed in an accounting basis? Uh, for the costs, when in reality, it doesn't cost the city any more money. And but you're charging the budgets. Now it's not gonna change the, the bottom line. But it's gonna change the accounting to show there isn't as much subsidy because you're not showing the revenue to those individual entities.
We're, we're showing revenue. So that revenue.
City, but not to the, not to the parks and recreation and the golf course of that money you sell.
No, and that's where.
You sell.
Okay, let's.
Okay, I'm done.
Yeah. Let's just, the revenue for the golf course shows in the revenue for the golf course in this. So when people play, all the revenue that's generated from the golf course shows up in that first line item. All the expenses, including water, show up in the next line item, which is the one point four million. The total subsidy is three seventy-five. So it does show all the revenues from the golf course, from the clubhouse, from everything else is shown there. So it, it shows. We want an accurate accounting. There's only, there's two, the pool and the golf course that we have that really function a little differently than our other recreation. And, uh, those are the two. And, and that's why we keep an accurate accounting of revenues coming into those two and expenditures going out. So that we know, you know, fees that we're charging, is that, is that getting us closer to, to breaking even if we charge more fees, but we get less play? I mean, it's like a business, Val, uh, those two, where government was never, government's not a business.
You know, I understand what you're saying. The only thing I don't understand is the revenue that's made from the water that's not used, the secondary water should be allocated to a budget that would lessen the subsidy because the money goes into the city as a whole.
He, okay, well. I, 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 I only disagree because it's, it's, um, that in, in and of itself is just a general water budget that we pay for and is to go for everything. And so it does go in the general budget, but it has nothing to do with recreation, um, necessarily. Well, yes, but so does culinary and things like that. It's just, and it, believe me.
We don't use secondary water for culinary.
Well, do we have any other questions or comments? I do appreciate the comments, but I think we beat that.
So do I.
So, any other thoughts on the budget? And I am glad to see that the subsidy on the golf course is diminishing. And that's been a focus. Aaron Brown's been doing a really good job up there. Uh, getting more play. Um, appreciate Mike and his efforts in getting the course back to shape like it needs to be. And so there's been a lot of, uh, a lot of progress made at the golf course and we're grateful to see we're moving in the right direction. So.
Mayor, I think we go out of public, uh, hearing on the budget.
Okay. Any other comments before we entertain that motion? Seeing none. Second by Councilman White. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll consider ourselves back in regular session. Any other thoughts or comments on the budget?
Uh, Mayor, since Councilman Goodrich and Councilman Barrett aren't here, uh, I get the feeling you'd recommend we wait till next meeting to approve this, just to make sure we get their input.
I was thinking the same. Thank you for, for that. So we'll table this tonight for an actual decision.
Do you need a motion to table? I'll move. We table it till next council meeting.
Okay. Motion and a second by Councilman Allen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item, sanitation fee schedule amendments.
Um, this was about last time, right? Um, just a, I don't know if you'd say clear color or.
It's a quick, uh, yeah. The intent was, well, I, we'll just say it for the public. So the rates raised for garbage, a dollar for the first can, it wasn't applied. A dollar for the first can, it wasn't applied to the second can, so tonight we're just. Applying that dollar raise to the second can, so.
I would move to go into a public hearing, you know, to discuss the K K, can still change.
Have a motion?
I'll second.
I have a second by Councilman White, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, okay, uh, we'll consider ourselves in a public hearing for this amendment to the fee schedule, again, it's. Basically, we didn't get the dollar added to the second can when we added a dollar in our last increase, any questions on this? Does that make sense, the way I explained it?
This increase was because the landfill increased the fee, is that right?
Well, it was part of the 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 agreement we had, yeah, it was the the landfill and 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 cost, so they raised it and. And it was supposed to go a dollar for each can, and somehow that got missed.
Yeah, so in our contract, we had one, they had one opportunity to have an increase during the term of their contract. They received an increase from uh Blue Bench Landfill, they went ahead and took that. And exercised that portion of their contract to raise rates, and so this is just finalizing that, something that we missed, so. Any questions from the public?
I don't see any, so I'm going to move out of public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to go back into regular session, second by Councilman Allen, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll consider ourselves back in a regular session, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
By Councilman White, then do we have a second?
I'll second.
By Councilman Bozenbar, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, vote is unanimous, next issue?
We're tabled.
Great. Okay, Water Conservation Grant Approval, Ryan Clayburn, thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, many happy. So this one, we just need formal approval from council to accept the grant from Division of Water Resources for two million dollars, a hundred percent grant. We just need approval for signatures, it's for eleven thousand five hundred feet of secondary water pipeline. It will be about a hundred forty-six secondary water connections in the city. So we've been awarded the grant, we just need the formal council approval, that we can sign the document and get two million dollars.
We talked about this previous meeting, so I move we approve.
Councilman White, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I will just say really quickly, two million dollars, um, our staff did a really good job getting that grant, it's to expand our secondary water system. So that's just free money, well, getting our money back that we paid in income tax. Um, do we table on that one as well?
Yep.
Okay, J U V Agreement for Airport Fencing, Kirby?
So yeah, it's uh, I don't know, I think it's pretty straightforward, and I think it's acceptable, yeah, it uh, expanding uh to be put around the uh airport. And it's also my grant funded by FAA and U N A. And our portion, so the total is ninety-two thousand, and our lack can be forty-three hundred. So all we're looking to do tonight, J U V, and myself, is to get approval for Josh to sign it.
Excellent.
Can you get a hundred percent, Kirby?
You know, with the FAA, uh, a lot of the grants, as long as it's an improved project, is ninety, usually ninety-five percent funded. Um, which is a, I mean, it's phenomenal. Yeah, and I think two percent kicks in from the state sometimes, so, um, this will secure our airport finally, uh, this will give us a lift gate as well, and uh. You know. Yeah, so the ramp will be protected, it's always been open up until this point, so. Uh, any questions for Kirby on that?
Move to approve? Second.
Motion to approve, and second by Councilman Allen, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion is unanimous, thanks, Kirby. Court Lease Agreement Discussion, is this your grant?
Do you want to do the city amendments?
Oh, yeah, I I skipped that, because that's why everybody's here. All right, let's go ahead, did you want to table that one, though, Grant?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, let's move to nine E, Proposed Amendments to Roosevelt City Code Titles ten and twelve, Drew.
Hopefully all showed up easy to me. Okay, so, per the direction of the council last meeting, we went back to staff. Kirby, our other Works Director and Chief Watkins, Chief of Police, and revised the Vehicles and Traffic Section for accommodations for snow. Storms and parking on street, so if you haven't had a chance to read through that, I think we did a little bit of a hybrid of of the one and two options from the last time. And we built a staff that just would cover up. In the event of a snowstorm and not be as restricted, having vehicles removed. For four months during the snow, uh, events of winter, winter weather from us, they did define winter events and. Snowstorms in this, where previously we did not have that, so it's more defined section, and spells out what that. Two inches of snow or more is when we just, mainly this department, the snow removal, and we did include that in this section. So any questions on that?
Chief? Mike that we work with at the World?
Mike did handle, yes.
And they they helped us with that?
We met the staff and then fixed then what we had, and they they will listen to to this in the section.
Sorry, man.
Are you, did you get a chance to read over the final version? And what are your thoughts about being able to? Monitor this and enforce it?
Would do this easier than to have a. No argument, certainly, but amongst our.
Okay, and and Kirby, same thing, you're the one that has to pile this roads.
Yeah, I am good with this, the law will make it cheap.
You feel good about it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
This is just for discussion tonight, we did not have an answer approval, but we can.
Perfect. Yep.
Fantastic, and then Title twelve. We haven't done any revisions on that, we're just looking for direction from news council. On what to be looking forward for this section.
Okay, so we've had several people comment earlier, this is section twelve with. Uh, some of the discussion that we've had earlier, correct?
The golf courses, yeah.
Yep.
So just while she's looking that up, we did, in the nature park language, where we have new parks. And then also we golf course, as far as the trespassing individuals prohibited in the section.
I just want to read that section one more time, did we make any changes since last time? Okay.
If we could have this, make a copy. It would be twelve dot twenty dot zero by zero.
It's not, if it's not awful long, go ahead and read it, if you would.
Okay, it says entrance to or exit from the golf course and its associated grounds shall only be allowed through designated access points as established by the. Professional or their designee. It shall be unlawful for any person to enter upon the golf course and its associated grounds, whether the golf course is in operation or not, unless said person has either paid through wire fees. Or admittance, or has expressed permission otherwise to be on the golf course and its associated grounds by the golf professional or their designee. This section shall not apply to employees of the golf course, city employees, other governmental agencies, or currently engaged in the performance of their duties who are required to enter onto the golf. Or its associated grounds to perform their duties or their designee. And then Allen's prohibited section. Says, do you want me to read that one as well?
Yeah, we've got it up here. Now, quick question, I know we're updating our codes and everything else, but what did our previous code say, did it? Is this basically what it used to say, or did it, did it change?
So everything in red is addition to. Everything in the black would be the closely.
It's above there. Right, up 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 one bit, anymore?
Okay, so thi- this is an addition to, so I don't think there are any.
Okay. Well, we've had, we've had a lot of discussion, do we have any thought, obviously, we're just talking about having a final discussion before we actually implement. But. Garrett, I can see you, do you have some thoughts? We'll allow you to speak, you'll have to come up to the mic.
My name's Garrett Grant, um, I've came here and spoken on my phone since before, um, the one that seems like a huge liability issue, so, um. You're up here, they're hitting a golf ball, if someone's hit by that golf ball, obviously, they can be, they're really mad we killed them, and I'm responsible for any golf ball I hit, so. If these people are up there, maybe they decided the labor that I'm not liable if I hit and killed them, or something like that, but not only that, but. We're up there to golf, we pay to use the golf course for golf, I mean, for them to go up there and use the golf course for real walk, that's. Right to me either, but, um, I guess I sort of like those before, but it seems like we have to be able to use the golf course for golfing, golfing.
Thank you, well, um. Do we have any any comments from the, from the council? Did you have a comment?
I'm not from the council, but I have a thought.
Okay, go ahead, we'll allow you, because we allowed Garrett.
Hold on, tell me outnumbered, I know. But I still, um, I'm Trudy Duncan, and, um. Just because I'm outnumbered, just being that I have a point of view, and so I want to present that tonight. Um, I've heard a lot about allowing the walking path, I never, ever intentioned, and I don't think anybody thought it was gonna be a walk. However, I think it's highly unreasonable. That the city would not allow my husband and I to get out at six in the morning, like we've been doing. We have not seen a girlfriend, and that's an honest show. We walked this morning, we see the walkers, they smile away at us, um, I guess, I just think, wow, that, it's totally unreasonable. We're very respectful of walkers, if they're out there, we just know, you know, we can walk, they're determined, no. We will try to walk the perimeter, as far as I've heard accusations that, um, there's been increased litter. I can guarantee you it's not. However, we've been known to take out garbage and cans and stuff, so I just feel like that's an unreasonable accusation. Um, we've tried to walk late in the evening when the walkers are done, we are here eyes and ears, especially for the co-work team. We see a lot going on out there, and I've been like, heard a loud noise, it's like it's some big major windstorm, and it was a mainline and a girl. We recorded it, I think it was potentially gone on another hour or so, um, we want to have a workable relationship. I don't think we're asking for anything that's out of line, as far as, um, liability, we two, about three weeks ago, we had like our big windows broken in our house. And we we got no support, and about absolutely zero, denied that we hit the ball, which we have it on our video camera. So, yes, walkers are liable, um, but. You know, you can say, well, you chose to live there, that's true, but we would like to have a workable relationship, and we had no intention for it to be converted to a walking path. There's very few walkers, it's just, we live there, um, Katie can't drive, she has a seizure disorder, it's, um, a really psychological benefit to her to be able to out there and like leaving and walk. I don't want to be in violation of law. That's not what we're asking, I'm, I don't feel like I'm asking for a special privilege, um, we live there, and I think that we do things to help the walkers too, so, thank you for listening.
Okay, any comments from the council or thoughts, because I have a few.
I have.
Go ahead.
Two, I have also been here before, um, Roger, Roger, I'm here. And I echo also what Trudy says, I'm in city limits, so I do also pay taxes, and I believe. Appreciate that the subsidy for the golf course is very low comparatively, but because I do pay taxes and subsidize. I also believe that we can, you know, use it, I I don't want to be making a walking path or anything as well. And I do understand can be dangers on those things, but I also agree that we need to. Just have a working relationship, again, helping those that are also on the golf course and the golf. By being here, and and also by, and I would also ask, clearly, this is probably going to be depending on walkers are allowed on or not, but those that may be, um. Perimeter, the golf course, just be able to enter the golf course from the.
Thank you. So, any other thoughts? Do you have some thoughts?
Well, I just wanted to mention, and I don't know if many are aware, as we continue forward with the walking path. We're planning on coming up Clubhouse Drive and down Arriba, and that was supposed to be. Part of that plan and painted separate ride, so there are going to be additional areas for walking that go right by the golf course.
Yeah, one of the thoughts that that I have, and I know we all pay taxes, and we all pay taxes, we all subsidize all the recreation that we we have. And, you know, as I've been, this is just my own opinion, and and here's the benefit of being an elected official or a public servant, and you're danged if you do, and you're danged if you don't. Um, but just logically, as I've been contemplating this and thinking about, and I don't get a vote, but I'll just tell you what my opinion is. Uh, you know, we subsidize a lot of different things, we subsidize the walking path, we subsidize sporting programs, we subsidize heavily the pool. So there are a lot of subsidies, but then there are also uh explicit uses for certain things too. And I feel like the golf course, that is an explicit use uh for golf course, and yes, it's subsidized, but it's one of those things that they, the. The use of that, just like the pool, is an explicit use, that means, it's the most, as we've seen, it's the heaviest subsidized thing that we have right now. By the way, when I was on the council previous, I'm the one that predicted that, I just want to know for the record. So, but what I'm getting at is, even though that's heavily subsidized, and the the most heavily subsidized form of recreation. We still do not allow anyone to enter that facility unless they pay, and it's only a, it's a single use uh item, and so. Just going to principle and taking the motion out of it, for me, that's, that's what it comes down to, is we've got a. I I think if we try to. Restructure or reidentify the use of the golf course, I think it does open a can of worms, um. Uh, it does make it a little tricky, I get a hundred percent what you're saying, I lived up there, and I'll be honest, at first, when I lived up there, I'm thinking, hey, I I should have. I should be able to go on there, and I never did, I just, I always, I realized that that wasn't a use for me, even though I lived up there, and um. And so I never did access the golf course unless I was actually golfing. That was just, that's a personal feeling, and that's personal to me, so that is my feeling uh about the golf course, I know it's probably not popular with some. Uh, it may not be popular with any, but it's how I feel, and I think I just want that out there.
As we've talked about this. I I do feel that that there is a conflict if you have walkers and golfers there at the same time. The only way that that it works, if you're gonna have, let people walk, is. The only way that, that it works, if you're going to have, let people walk, is there can't be any golfers. So that eliminates that issue. I don't know if you can have that situation ever happen where you're guaranteed that there won't be golfers. The other situation is, I, I don't feel that it's right that golfers have to pay to use the golf course, but you can go do something for free. So i- if we were to make something work, I think it would have to state that there can't be golfers and walkers at the same time, and everybody has to pay a fee to utilize that resource.
I don't want to muddy the water, but I do have one question, because we have, well, I won't muddy the water. Do you have a comment on?
I have a question and a comment. I was wondering about wheel vehicles, I know there's been a problem with those, is that, is that, we've already have, already have that code, or is that an adjustment to code, do you know?
If it isn't here, it would be in addition to.
It's depending on what you decide on, what about anybody decides just the golfers can use it, it probably becomes a move.
Okay.
Then everybody would be excluded except the golfers, and I think the golf rule covered that, should use the car to walk. So we would need to address that specifically if you decide you're going to allow other to use the golf course.
And I'm not unsympathetic to the walkers, but my concern is, is allowing some versus others, I talked to Aaron about, like, I know Mike sprays in the close part of the court, and how would we let walkers know then, and there's some liability with the spraying and and with the animals, I think, again, the golfers are paying for the use of that, then if we did allow walkers, which I'm not as supportive either, but if we did, I would expect there'd be some fee for them that they would pay for use, but at the end of the day, it's, we have walking paths that we're trying to create to help mitigate that. I don't know that anybody is, is monitoring that after, you know, before the golf course opens or after, and, you know, I don't think, but during, during the day when golfers are there, we need to not have people walking, because as was mentioned, it's not a walking path, it's a golf course, you know, and so I understand their desire to want to have a place that's beautiful up there, it's great to, you know, that's where golfers like to go, they like to walk around and see that stuff, but they're also there to golf, and it would only take one person getting hit with the ball, and that would ruin it for not just the person, but it'd be the golfer and, and family, et cetera, and I'm, so I, I just don't know if there's a way to to make that work. I'm just, like I said, I'm more supportive of not doing it, and I'm not unsympathetic, I think it's great that we have the facility, you know, but, and I know it's subsidized, but we don't open the pool all day so people can walk in and out of the pool or some of the other facilities we have, so, you know, I, I understand that. I wish there was a way we could come, come to some solution that would benefit anyone, but I, again, I don't know how we also, Mia brought this up last time, I don't know how we say, okay, if you live by the golf course, you're allowed to walk around, but if you don't, you know, how, how do you even manage that, and I don't, I don't think it would be fair at all. So anyway, those are my thoughts, again, I'm kind of, yeah, I don't think it's popular, but I haven't come up with a, I mean, I would love to make it work, I just haven't found a way that I think that makes it work, that makes sense in my mind. So, but again, we don't have to decide tonight, thank goodness, maybe something will happen in the interim, and we come up with something, but I, I know Councilman Goodrich, I would like to maybe share her thoughts from the email, really, she wasn't able to be here, she had shoulder surgery today, but her thought was to maybe take out of the code, no walking, jogging, et cetera, and say something like, at no time shall anyone on the course slow or impede golfers on the course. So if they're walking and they're not impeding anyone, but again, I'd still be worried a little bit about some liability issues, like you mentioned with when they're, when they're fixing up the course and spraying and doing things, how do we let the walkers know they shouldn't be in those areas, you know, we don't want anyone getting sick or getting chemicals and things, so again, just my thoughts, but that's kind of what Councilwoman Goodrich said, is that maybe there'd be there no, at no time shall anyone on the course slow or impede golfers on the course, so people could maybe walk early or late, but they can't walk during the day because that would cause a problem, anyway, that was her thoughts.
No, no, just come up to the mic.
No, I just, I just like to if we make it to where they can walk with a fee and walk the golf course, would that be equitable that they pay the same as the golfer does for walking on golf?
I would say so.
It would have to be.
Well, I don't think they want to pay $45 every time they walk.
But they can get a year pass, they save some money that way.
Yeah. It would have to be equitable, but I think it would be unrealistic for them to pay that much money.
Well, I could technically, honestly, I could technically go pay my golf fee without no clubs and just go and walk and, you know.
Technically you could, you would have to get a tee time.
Well, but that's what I'm saying, without clubs though, and then as long as I'm following the same golf etiquette as everyone else.
And I have no problem.
I could, I could technically do that.
As long as they don't sell.
So that's not something that you can't, I mean, that's not restricted right now, I could technically go buy a pass and go walk as long as I'm following proper etiquette. Or I could have my, my keychain club in my pocket.
They have to be usable with a golf ball.
Well, now you're, now you're adding things.
I have to, I have to have a golf club to use it, so.
Well, there's nothing in the ordinance that says you have to swing a golf club.
But there are golf course. There are on the golf course rules.
Sure.
How many clubs do you have to carry? Just one?
Depends on how many you need to play. I carry 13, but I can't get those numbers, you know.
Anyway, it is a good discussion, and I get the, I get both sides of the discussion. But ultimately, my, my personal feeling is we have designated areas for designated things, and that's one of them. And it's hard to change the use, because if you change it per one or two, then you have to change it per all, and then that changes the overall use, and it impedes what what was intended when we built the course, so it's a difficult discussion. But we are building lots of trail through the city, the, as Cody Allen, or, I almost called you Commissioner, you should run for committee. Councilman Allen has mentioned, we, we will have trails that come up and through Arriba Road and hit Second Nor, and then on over to the walking path. We would love to have a trail on Summerall Lane, which is closer to your house, that would also connect up to the walking path. So those are things that we're working on right now, it might be a little wild, but.
Super dangerous.
Yeah.
So don't walk to Summerall.
Yeah, and if we do, we'll widen those, we'll put, paint lines on, we'll widen some of those, and we'll make sure that they're safe to walk on, that's one of the things we definitely want to do in our city, when we're done with our trail system, we'll have eight miles of trail within the city, and then we're working with the county also to extend that actually on your road, Second North, on out to 3000 West and around to the north coast, Coe Road. So there will be some other options, it may take a few years, but.
Well, we're not making a decision tonight, we're still thinking about it, and like I said, I you know, my thoughts are what I said, and, and, you know, I'm still willing, open to look at things, and we don't have to decide tonight, but we want to get it probably the next meeting or two, right?
Any input that you can help us with, shared, you can go online here on our website and make those comments.
Okay.
That will help us with the decision, we bring this back to you for the next one, hopefully for next meeting.
Okay. Thanks, Drew, appreciate you.
Can I just bank on more comments?
Uh, one quick one, and then we got to move on.
On Trudy's again. What I want to say is, I, I will support, you know, feel good about it if you decide we can, the walkers, however, I'm living there and I expect all these other things to be enforced, or I definitely will. I, I just wanted, that's one record, that there's so many things that you've put into these policies that I see are not enforced now. I don't know why we're recreating so many guidelines to be followed when we're not enforcing them yet. So I just want that, everybody to know that, so.
What are those?
Alan Mortson, I'd like to say that we also are there, we see a lot that's not enforced, and that's because of the minimal budget that the golf course has, they, they don't receive a lot of money. So it's hard for them to enforce that when they don't have the funds or the means to enforce that. We also live there, and we see the same things that they see.
Well, and we'll look into that, and those are two good points, and they both, both points address the same issue, which is, we need better enforcement.
Yeah.
So, thank you for those comments. Expenditure, expenditure and approval, financial review, did we see that go down?
Yeah, it went down, I mean, we approved.
Okay, motion to approve, do we have a second? By Councilman Allen, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is unanimous. Capital project updates? Please.
And the public's leaving, I would just like to point you out, for a public hearing meeting for the budget, this is the greatest.
About to get exciting.
So just so much feels, golf course will always be on the agenda during the budget public hearing. We'll bring it in. Exactly. That was phenomenal, that public here for budget hearing, that is something I didn't know, never. It's usually our worst attended meeting, so thank you to the public, it came, that was phenomenal. Couple things put on your radar, ideally, we will have three ribbon cuttings in the next three months. Hopefully you got your invitation, June 20th, 5:00 PM, Nature Park ribbon cutting. There will be a big ceremony there, we've got a lot of things planned, a lot of fun activities, it's on the radio, it's getting shared by everybody. Please keep in mind we'll have ribbon cuttings and a special for all of you council members, so I will be reaching out to you individually, making sure that you were there. But please make sure you, your family, your friends, everybody's there, wonderful event, June 20th, 5:00 PM, share it, spread the word. And again, hopefully we'll have a couple more ribbon cuttings with the ballpark and the Innovation Hub soon to follow afterwards. Quick, quick report, any questions?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Quick, I do have one, we talked about the donation from the, from the hospital, 20,000. Did we, and they just need directions, not that we have to make a decision as a council, but they just need direction. Is that something we feel comfortable just contributing to the basketball courts?
Good idea.
Yes.
Okay. Let's go ahead, and that gives them recognition too. Dustin, well, actually Jim texted me, I guess I'll respond back, I was going to ask if you would, but I've got to respond back to him anyway, so I'll let him know that. And I think that would be more visible than the gun range forum. Money is fungible, so whether it helps there and, or at the gun range, it's all money and, and we're grateful for it, so. Committee reports. Items for discussion, future items.
We're doing a closed session.
Yeah, and I have an item on there, closed session I want to bring up, which is, yes, yep, exactly. Is there any other reason to go into closed session besides the contract with Cedarmontwell?
Yes.
Okay.
Litigation is one, and public negotiation.
Potential litigation and property. What did you say, acquisition, okay. So those are the reasons we need to go into closed session, do we have a motion?
I remove you into closed session.
Okay, roll call vote, Councilman White?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And we will go ahead and consider ourselves, or move into closed session, thank you.
That was hot, I'm going to say hi.